Call to Order, Town Freedom Special Scheduled Meeting for February 18 at 6:05. Right slow.
Okay. I shall do a roll call.
That's a great idea.
Okay. Barack in?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Line item three, any non-scheduled guests? No. Line item four is discussion on ordinance letters sent out since the last.
I will take that off. Copy and paste it. Oh, so none?
None.
Not apply.
Okay. Then for four, line item five, discussion in action on past meeting minutes from the January night meeting.
Did everyone have a chance to read them?
I did read them.
I just didn't hear them. So I have to hear it for you.
Or make a motion?
A second.
Right then. Let us get off my team.
Barack.
You want me to say yes or abstain? Yes.
Your choice. Look. You got me off call. Smith?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Line item number six, discussion in action on purchase orders for the general fire and ambulance hours. Has the board had a chance to look at those?
Have not, because I have them. I have the copy for you two, actually. Oh, thank you very much.
How much though?
Well, how's nothing after the day?
Did you cough?
No, only times I hit my head on the pins, getting in and out of the stop show pins.
Does that happen a lot today?
It did. Also, and I will say on the general fund, I did extend the blanket POs through the rest of the year. So that way, I averaged out the last part. Hopefully that'll get us through the end of the year.
What is the Caleo equipment?
I am not sure. I didn't understand the description.
The separate ambulance?
It's for ambulance, yes.
It's a van.
It's like, the original invoice was for like ninety-eight hundred dollars and then they discounted it to where we only had to pay that amount. So yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure.
You negotiate her.
Yeah. So, no, like you said, this is medical stuff. I don't really understand a lot of the descriptions.
It's like the Caleo guy, but it's the workout portion.
I do.
Running for mastodons. Are those two sewer tap repairs on the same job?
That was from Saddlehorn.
Down there on the end of the road?
Yes, I'm guessing, yes.
I think one of the guys digging it out now, probably the saddle from law.
Yeah. Yeah, it was the equipment.
Okay.
The supplies for that. And yeah, comfort zone was the general equipment, yes.
Only treasurer training would end in a nice round number like ninety-two, ninety.
I know. It's the, and that's without sugar because I'm gonna pick my hook up when I go.
Where'd you go?
Getting to Woodwork this time.
Okay.
So, and Dawn is actually gonna go with me because it's free. I mean, we paid a membership and then you can send as many as you want to.
Do they have shrimp cocktail?
No, they don't.
You own your own.
So. No, it's at the Woodworks, um, the mid center or whatever it is that's up there, up at By High Plains.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the purchase orders? Is everybody sure? Everybody doesn't? Can I get a motion to approve the PO?
Don't make that motion.
One second. Barack?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Line item number seven, discussion in action on employee drug and alcohol testing policy and procedures. Cindy, tell us all about it.
For the OCC and DOT for our gas lines, we, um, followed one, but we didn't have one, I mean, we followed the DOT's drug alcohol policy. They did our testing from random pick and everything. But the OCC wanted us to have one for the town of Freedom, built into their policies and procedures and put into our OCC, um, operator, OQ book, whatever, that all this is up. I asked Omeg and Omel for samples and went through and made one that fit our, um, town's uniqueness with the gas lines and this with pre-employment like we've always done in the past. And, because basically it's like anyone that has to deal physically with the gas line has to be drug tested randomly, whichever. And then here it says that's, um, it kind of goes over that. The responsibilities of the individual, if they want to appeal the, um, test or appeal having to take one or whatever. And the responsibilities of the town to make sure that it gets done for the OCC and disciplinary action if there happens to be any sort of positive test, which we've always had negative tests here for the town, so. Um, and it just states who would be subject to random testing. It's like the firefighters. Um, persons engaged in activities which strictly affect the safety of the public. Um, anyone that has contact with the inmates, if we do the summer inmate program, then we're covered that way, so. And so, I mean, it's just kind of pretty cut and dry. It just says this policy will be in effect ten days after posting in a permanent place at the town facility where employees can routinely, who routinely report for duty. And plus, we could get this to any new hire. We let them, I mean, in the interview process, letting them know that we do this and then they would have to do this and their hire would be subject to passing. Just in that way they know what's all up front.
So can an employee be called in more than once a year? Is that just, is just random?
Random. I was saying, is the, because our pool really isn't big enough for the DOT to always poll every year.
So is things, wouldn't it be just Stewart?
Yeah, we've had randoms where like the same person.
Yeah. It's supposedly done by, you know, bigger companies is randomly done by a computer employee numbers picked. And I know several people who are like three months in a row and picked and it's like, okay, so anyway. But yes, for us, like I said, DOT's pool for Town Freedom, when you're in a bigger pool, we're not polled every year. But you guys, as the board can say, okay, you know, just say randomly. Here, we want to have them tested this month. We have all the paperwork and forms here. Just give it to them and go.
So it's just the firefighters, ambulance people?
In with public safety or?
Would Dawn be called?
It would depend on you. I mean, she doesn't have any direct physical contact with the gas line itself, but, um, it would just, like I said, that would depend on you. The, like I said, the DOT is the one we're rolling in OCC for the gas line is the main.
That's pretty much Stewart.
Pretty much. Or anyone like, if we get him some more help or anything like that, I mean, they would be possibly have the chance of working with it, so they would need to be tested. And was this sent out to all you guys beforehand? Because I put it together about a month ago. Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to what we have now. It's just.
It's just, in this it says Town of Freedom. Yeah, that's.
I would like to make, unless there's any further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll stoke it.
Employee drug and alcohol policy and procedures.
Barack?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Line item eight, department reports. Do we have anything from our maintenance department?
I have Stewart. We wanted to look at, um, that sewer company, did some quotes again to see. Give me more copies. There's one with just the description of the work and everything that they would do. It's the same company, the utility maintenance contractors that have done it for us in the past on two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve. And they again recommend doing like two thousand and nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. And, um, description of the work would be six thousand milli feet of cleaning, televising, six hundred milli feet at eighty-five cents twenty-nine foot, which comes out to fifty-one hundred the first year. And I'm guessing they just kind of go by inflation because it goes up two cents each year after that. So it's eighty-seven cents per foot in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty-one it's eighty-nine cents per foot. So. And they're out of Wichita. Yeah, so. Or that's where Barack is at. I'm not sure if that's where the crew comes out of, but.
Yeah, we'll see at Wichita.
And if gas prices should go up over four dollars a gallon, we would pay the difference. So we want to do it fairly quickly if we agree to do this, so before gas prices go any higher. I don't project or hope that they would go up. I mean, I do and I don't because it has been worse than I thought. Yeah. With hope, gas prices don't go to four dollars a gallon again and soon.
How long are the, how long is the contract for?
Three years. Three years of cleaning and then you would re, look at it. But that's what they would give us for three years. The pricing that they would give us for three years.
And we can do a three-year contract?
Yes, because this is through the municipal trust. The payment would be through the municipal trust. With a thing sewer.
I feel they used the word televised.
I get it.
Yeah, televised. I'll look that one, put that on YouTube or anything, but.
It sounds live, I can imagine.
But live. Me from conference or some house on that. I'm sure, you know, date by the twenty-twenty would be a little more interesting.
Well, casting a lot from Uptown Freedom. You, Cindy? That's Stewart, mine. We've had a contract with them before. Is that something that the board would need to vote on, the new contract? Do we have to put that as a line item on our next agenda?
Um.
Actually, I guess, I'm sorry, on the MTA agenda.
Yeah, it would need to be put on the MTA agenda.
Is everybody okay with that going on the MTA agenda for next year?
I don't think he had anything else. I knew that when they came and did the work on the water tower, they did the cleaning and stuff on this year.
And go to the inside?
Said that we really probably need to start looking at a replacement tower. A replacement in the tower.
The one at, at Park?
That it's getting pretty bad. So.
That was the whole point of having a commercial ceiling coating company, is to protect your infrastructure.
Well, you know.
How old is it?
Thirties model.
Is it really, seriously? So we've been really fortunate, I think, probably.
And I think, um, he has done some looking at like some of the different sizes and stuff. He doesn't have anything ready to present, but I know that he has been looking at that because I, I asked him to start looking at it because I figured we would really need to probably look at a, um, rural water level or grants or something like that because they're gonna be.
I wonder now that we don't use wells in town and it comes through rural water pressure, if we could engineer it without a tower?
I don't know.
Because the whole north half of town is just fed off of rural water pressure and there's no reserve. But I don't know what's required, obviously in fire or something, it'd be nice to have water somewhere in the reserve.
I'm not sure. I know that when Dawn and I went to the ODA RE grant meeting, that there were a couple of towns that were doing um, water tower replacement projects. And she was gonna get with Stewart and have him make some calls to those towns to see what they were doing, what companies they were using and just kind of get some general ideas on that as well, so. I don't want to keep making future plans for re projects. That's why I think it might be better. And it always, you know, on the RE grant application, do you have loans outstanding? You know, do you have a water loan? Do you have, you know? But I just know we don't want to get into a consent order if something should happen. So I think proactively looking at future projects would probably benefit. So I do know that that's one thing he's also.
Can we get historical marker grant? We haven't moved it like the depot.
Um, let me start.
Lasted the antique water towers, yeah.
Sure the tower is there. Where would the busters have a place to move?
They got it. They found some place.
I sent it for the maintenance department. You have any more good news from the maintenance department?
I don't either, I'm sorry.
Did the, the water tower maintenance company, do they leave any time to report when they get done?
I haven't seen it. I would think that they would get something to Stewart.
I'd like to see what they.
And a lot of times they have pictures that go with it, but I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Um, but I know that if they give it them something, they got to see it, that's all.
Because I know sometimes things get reported about. I like shot, shot.
I wonder if we could go on their website and maybe have a login or something?
I don't, you know. I've never been, I've not seen anything with a portal, you know, everything's a portal now.
Yeah.
I don't think these are poor people. I keep going wrong. All right, Cindy, report from the office manager. Everything running smoothly and nothing to report?
Pretty much. Um, she did have a couple of things, um. Tara, I don't know her last name. One that cleans up around town. I just remember her name was Tara.
Why would you ask now on camera? I have it on the tip of my tongue.
I know, I don't. That's why I like it one. I'm just like, it's Tara.
Anyway, it's a little landscape company.
Yes, she was, um, cleaning up and doing all the tree removal and stuff for several people around town and things like that. I was wondering if we could possibly give her like a season pass rate versus the five time, five dollars every time she goes down there. And, um, and Dawn had mentioned maybe if she got her own lock to put on it, then she wouldn't have to come back here and get the key. And anything like that. And she could have her own access since it's mainly weekends that she wouldn't need to be down there for a lot of them weekends. So that is all our responsibility on her. Somebody got hold of her key though. Yeah, and that's, I mean, they, we're just trying to.
Could be fixed with bolt cutters if it's ever an issue.
Yeah, you're right, I'm just saying.
But that was one thing that, um, Tara had come in here and talked to her about was possible.
She's asked me about that several times because apparently Stewart's made it to where there's one key.
I guess.
Now that gets loaned out. And obviously on weekends. Or anytime that Stewart's busy or in training or you can't get hold of him or whatever, you can't access the dump, so. Somebody that's using the dump all the time, I think we need to figure something out on them.
I do too. So she's helping to keep, keep it down, but nice. But I didn't know, um, just like right now we have what, five dollars a daily pass and I think it's like, I just rented one, a weekend pass would be. Anyway. Um, but there's no mention of like a longer term than the ordinance that we do have, so it would just be. If they want to make it to where people could have it, I mean, they're probably, I would recommend it being on a case-by-case basis. Otherwise you're gonna have fifty locks down there.
She's the only one I know of doing it for a living.
Right.
Besides the town and the county.
So yeah, I think we should get her a lock. Get her a own. And she said she would probably, I mean, get her own that way and, um, and Dawn said possibly just make it to where it was a combination versus a key, in case it did get lost or somebody.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Something like that, so.
And then as far as cost, is she down there every day?
It's more multiple trips on a weekend and something throughout the week. I mean, it'll be, I recommended and I told you that I would make a recommendation to you guys to see what she, how much she used it for a month and then to figure out a cost. Like if she is down there daily, you know, what's that gonna total up versus a weekend versus what could we do to?
Because as long as she's, yeah, cleaning up around town, that's, that's a big plus.
Right. And it's not, I mean, it's raining big thunder. Then you come.
Gotta pay for that water tower somehow.
Yes, we do.
So yes, um, do we need to set something we have to go on?
No, I think, do you want her just to kind of do it a monthly and then we can see what her usage is before we determine the rates?
We'll stay on average first.
Okay.
Just a guess, you know?
Okay. And the other thing she had is the AF and AM building has several upcoming rentals and it still has the movie chairs, movie theater chairs and other things in the front. We've got to get rid of those. I don't know.
What if we just put those back here, so?
Well, that, well, that's what I asked because I was like, but I didn't know. I wanted her to look. Well, the water meters, when he starts ordering those for the replacements, those, he wants all those down there. So I thought here would probably be okay. But at some point in time, I don't know, we just declare them surplus and then, you know, I'd have to look at the surplus procedures as to what would go on after that. I think after that you could publish that there of course sale for bid. And then just, but I also didn't know if we wanted to get with the museum to see if they wanted any part of it before we opened it up.
Since it's the original.
Yeah, since that's the original movie theaters, chairs and stuff, so. But just like I said, it would just need to be cleaned up because like I said, mid-May is, she has mid-May, but I think there's actually an event in March. Someone's rented it out for something in March as well. But in mid-May, there's a group, an RB group that has rented out the entire RB park. And they want to use the AF and AM building for that week. I don't know what kind of, to gather and play cards and eat lunch. I mean, they just want a meeting place.
Is the floor okay? Because I know we never got it painted. We were waiting on something to do with taking the glue off the floor so they could paint it.
I'm not sure. I know Ed had put a stain on it or had done something to it. He'd taken all the glue and the carpet out.
Oh, he had?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, because I knew Bonnie, when she was here, we bought the paint.
Started, you know, she's done some stuff down there, but I don't know what all it has for now.
I have thought they were waiting on some kind of a glue remover to paint, but maybe not. It looks good, that's the one thing.
So would you want me to check into the surplus procedures for maximums and then after that on get with the museum? museum to end it.
Do we have the surplus procedures?
I think you just have to declare surplus and then like you said, then we could put it out for bid and that has to be published with anybody wanted them, but I would have to have a line item for you to declare what you want to declare surplus. Because if you want multiple things, and I could say, see the attachment or whatever, and then have it put in the minutes.
I wish we could keep a few down here just because they were part of the original theater.
Yeah, if they could be securely stored, you know, in a front room up against the wall, you know, just a corner, we think that we need to sell it down there just for, that's for storage purposes.
Yeah. And there's not much left of that theater except those. Would you like for me to do that?
Yes, check on the surplus procedure, see if the museum wants any of them. And we need to save a few of the best ones to maybe in there somewhere. I'm not sure why we can't really bolt them up against the wall. I think there was only a few that were in bad shape.
That's from my point of view. Yeah, they were mostly in pretty good, but you just, you can't find a hardware to fix them anymore till like change. So that's all she had, sticky notes from the head of order.
Well, if that concludes the office manager, let's move right on to some items see for the account or treasure report, if any.
The, um, there's the account balances. The general fund, I has an inflated balance because we got a city sales tax deposit of fifteen thousand some odd dollars, which is abnormal. We usually average about twenty-five hundred, so, um.
My account locked up.
So I'm gonna check and see if I can figure out, cause I know there's probably a portal to go and find out who's, you know? Cause a lot of those, when boom was going on, is all companies would have stuff that we should bring them as a delivery point. We can sell stuff cheaper. So. And I don't know if that's what it was. I'm not sure, so I just wanna check into it, so don't count on that fifteen thousand being.
In case it has to be returned, yeah.
Yes, because I'll probably get a letter in a couple of months coming. They're gonna be taking it back.
That comes from the state.
Yes.
Well, obviously it couldn't be mistaken or anything.
I don't blame the company that missed, that told them where we delivered the surplus. Somebody's.
Was it fifteen thousand exactly?
No, it's fifteen in Chinese, yeah.
And what is it normally about?
Average is right around twenty-five hundred. Like last month, it was twenty-six out of one something for January. And so February was, was like, I was like, I looked at it three times, making sure I was on the right line whenever I was putting it in my books. I was like, I double checked.
Unless when they liquidated the hardware, whoever received that put down freedom, they paid tax on it.
And then, I don't know.
That hardware? That's true. I've thought of that.
So like I said, there, there is a way to find out who, like each person themselves did everything, so.
Have co-op sold a lot of cake.
How's it looking? So anyway, the only other thing that I have is that the Pioneer Cell Tower is moving along. Um, I have an agreement from the FCC notification for Spectrum Manager release um, for the, um, airwaves, so that so they kind of probably needs to be reviewed by our attorney to make sure that our water meter telemetry isn't going to interfere with this. For our agreement with them. And the fact that they had the placement of the tower wrong. So Dawn sent them a new map of what, they still had it over between the basketball and tennis courts. And sitting over by the water tower. So Dawn sent them the map that showed them that was our quarter of the park and that that was where we wanted the tower.
Was that when they, their lawyers sent us another contract that better matched our coordinates if they sent a map?
No, they just sent a map separately. And so she called it.
They just changed on their map?
Right, so, um, which was fine, they were like, oh yeah, you're right. And they just hadn't changed it. Simple location has been corrected, so.
Good.
Um. She did do some research on, uh, surrounding towns sewer rates. That we had talked about last month with the sewer cleaning that we're doing on the maintenance and that we're going to possibly need to look at raising rates in the future, possibly. And we have very cheap sewer rates.
Actually, cheap, too?
Yes, a lot of towns go off of a, um, formula of how many gallons of water comes into the home and formulate it as a percentage of that going back out of the home. And they all have a minimum and then the, I mean, but like, which ones is, this is city of like office buildings is like per restroom. They have, you know, on top of that, which. And apartment buildings and hotels and hotels, it's all like, each one is different, but like, single family dwelling is sixteen seventy plus a dollar ten for every thousand gallon, gallons used over ten thousand, which we don't have two million could, that'd be over ten thousand. But right now we charge six dollars for sewer flat rate fee for single dwelling, family homes. And Buffalo is sixteen thirty a month. They have flat rate fee and Alba uses a gallon per water percentage and their base rate. Um, it looks like they have an incremental increasing rate per year. And right now, Alba inside the city limits, base rate is eleven dollars. And then they have per gallon usage and that's like less than a dollar maximum per gallon used after that.
So you'd have to have a new computer program and everything to be able to, if you did it like that rather than a flat rate?
I, I'm not sure. She would have to check with Jack Brown, the, um, creator of our billing software to see. Cause like right now, like our water is in there per gallons and so it's just a formula he has in there for that, um, billing code. It would just be based on billing codes. So if we had it in there and just put the, you just have a different formula for the gallon of water usage. You just put that gallon of water usage in there twice and you'd have a different, I think it's just a different formula. Cause gas is kind of the same way. You have your base rate and then much per gallon we're used after that.
So right now our base rate is six dollars?
Right, with no other.
Nothing else?
Nothing else. It's just a flat rate. As I said, Buffalo has a flat rate, but their flat rate's sixteen something, I mean.
So if ours even went at like two dollars, would it make a difference over a year?
It would, but I don't know. Like I say, if we're gonna be doing yearly maintenance for sure of five thousand plus dollars.
They'd be enough to cover, yeah.
Right. And it's not that we would be making, I mean, making a lot off of it. It's just a pass through. I mean, we just gotta consider our pass through fees, what's coming in. We gotta make sure that we're able to cover to pay out.
So ours has been too low probably for quite a while, likely?
Yes, especially with that, um, that vegetation control is what that Dynasty Three Hundred is. I think he was gonna do some research. I don't have any work on what it was, but, um, but I didn't have little games on to study them for years.
Do you think about the months that you have a water leak?
Yeah, and that would, I mean, you would have to, but it would be going and going in and coming out, I mean, all. But, yeah, you would have to take that into consideration, I guess. And that's why it's like you wouldn't cause you know, what goes out isn't all that comes in. I mean, cause you're watering your yard or filling up a pool or.
Mm-hmm.
You know, animals. It's not all going into this, so.
But it does sound better, but.
Yeah. Especially right now.
Yeah. Can't believe it stopped today, I hope, yeah.
I don't know, maybe tomorrow.
For this year. So you guys are done or you have to go ahead?
Districts is the end of the month.
So do we wanna put that on discussion for rate changes? Or do we wanna leave that for the next board to have their houses burnt down? I mean, you're talking about adjustment to bring us into the twenty-first century.
It needs to be done now.
Very old rates.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it hasn't been changed since I started doing billing and that was ten years ago.
That's certainly worth further discussion, I guess, of what we need to cover. I don't wanna be one of those towns like a lot of them and one of them is in that list of examples that a lot of people say they're, they're trying to be for profit.
Right, and that's what, I don't want to be.
And I don't wanna get into that, but I will make sure when cover our maintenance and everything.
And we have the legal right to do that. I mean, O L N O M A have said that, like each year I go to the training, they're like, make sure you are covering your costs. You have a legal right to do that at any point in time.
So maybe just kind of put some different scenarios and.
Yeah.
See where our maintenance is and surely there's some formula that our two finance majors here can come up with what it takes to, to do some kind of.
We'll get Jack the billing software.
Well, just for capital improvements and replacements, uh, cause you're talking about forty, fifty-year-old infrastructure.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to not do it like we get on a gas system and maybe have something built up for the next generation or two where they can replace some of this stuff. Instead of working up one day and finding out it's unequated. So can you have the?
We'll just have a sort of rate discussion.
In the meantime, can you get us this stuff together, sort of on its costs?
Yes. Yes, I can. And that'll also be on the MTA.
Okay. Well, MTA, hasn't has much action here.
Yes, so that's all that I have right now.
Okay. Well, thank you, Cindy. All right. I don't see any remarks from the government board, so if you have anything to say, you'll have to table that till the next meeting. Make a motion to adjourn if everyone's been talking about maintenance office manager and town reports. Get this meant, or adjournments?
Six fifty. Did you make a motion?
I said.
You said.
Should I make a motion?
Yeah.
Have you?
Thought you did.
I have three one to take.
I heard it.
Okay.
He did, didn't he?
Sometimes I ask for a motion and sometimes I make them.
Oh, okay.
Um, bracket?
Yes.
It's better, yes. Elondo?
Yes.
Need a adjourn?